Good evening. Welcome to the Board of Selectmen meeting for June 24th at 6:30 PM. We are at the Harry Butter Selectmen's Chambers in Norwood Town Hall at 566 Washington Street. Before we get started with our agenda, we're going to start with our Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Reflection.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. You may be seated. So we have a couple of appointments and then a few items of new business. Let's see, our first appointment will be at 6:40 unless we can take them early if they happen to be here.
We're ready.
If you're in, yeah, no sense keeping you in longer than we have to.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
So I'd like to introduce the Concert Committee. They're here this evening to talk about the 2025 Summer Concert Series. At the table, we have our committee members, Lee Leach, Dave Tuttle, Paul Easie, Pat Chick, there's Dot Prabhu, and Helen Donahue is here as well. Thank you for coming. We'd like to tell you a little bit about each of the three concert series that we're having, Carol on Sunday concerts as well as the Wednesday concerts. I know Paul wants to say a few words just to acknowledge the, both the committee and particularly the people who are the businesses and organizations who have shown us support to help make this a concert series going into, I know, the summer, the Wednesday concerts are well over 40 years. I think Sundays are up to 35 or more. So with that, maybe I'll just start with just telling you, and Mike Rosen is also a member of the committee, sorry, Mike, Mike to my right is also instrumental part of our committee. So we have a nice brochure that we have here that's going to be inserted into the Norwood Record. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan, for the help there. We're running concerts free on the Common starting July the 2nd. I'll take care of the Wednesday night concerts. I won't go through the all of them. We have a program, we'll list them all, but we're starting a little early. The July the 2nd is going to be a very special concert. It's featuring the legacy of Paul Alberta Jazz Orchestra and this formerly known as the Norwood Alumni Band who played last year on a Sunday night. They've been renamed the Legacy of Paul Alberta Jazz Orchestra after our late, great Director of Music at Norwood High School, Mr. Alberta. And we are particularly thankful, and that will be at 6:30, July the 2nd, on the Common, and we're particularly thankful for the sponsorship and donation from One Bistro who are paying for this concert entirely themselves, and we thank them for that.
Helen Donahue, before we get too far, I've got an alert from someone outside the building saying that they're not getting audio from us on the broadcast right now, so I might want to take a moment. Mr. Rosen, if you could check with Kiki and see if we can double-check if we got audio. I would hate for everybody to miss all the information.
Yes, I'd hate to write that out on this piece of paper and show it on, that would be hard.
Okay. Can we do a test just to see if everything?
Testing, testing one, two, three, talking to see if we're picking up audio or if it's still quiet. Anything? Are we good?
Yeah, I think that's just fine, I'm picking up all levels.
Okay.
I've just tried something else, so maybe now, but.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. All right, we may continue.
All right. Again, this is the Concert Committee and we're here to talk about the program for this year. I was just about to introduce the Wednesday series. We're going to kick it off on July the 2nd, 6:30 on the Town Common, Legacy of Paul Alberta Jazz Orchestra, special performance sponsored by One Bistro. We thank One Bistro for sponsoring this particular concert. Very special show with Kyle Leonard. Carl is the young man who played with the Boston Pops in 2022, and a lot of credit goes to Kyle for putting together an alumni orchestra in a tribute to Mr. Alberta. July 9th, we have Roundhouse, July 16th, Sweet Harmony, and on the 23rd, we have a new, we have two new bands coming, the three new bands, actually Sweet Harmony on the 16th, Love Dogs on the 23rd, Domino's FX Band, David Tessia's All-Star Band on the 6th of August, Acoustic Fire on the 13th, Boston's Aaron Aug on the 20th, J.D. Billy and Ken on the close-out our season, J.D. Billy and Ken first played at Summerfest in 1992, and so we have them back after a long hiatus, and we're looking forward to seeing them again. So that's our lineup for the summer concerts. We do have information on our Facebook page, kind of gets a good description of what some of these bands are. We have our eclectic mix of music from rock to jazz to R&B and some oldies as well, so it should be really a nice, nice time on the Common on Wednesday evenings. At this point, I'd like to turn it over to Dave Tuttle, and Dave will speak to you about the Sunday night shows that will be starting up in July as well. David, please.
Thank you, Bob. So Sunday, again, we have eight performances every Sunday starting July 6th through August 24th, not doing the last Sunday on the 31st because that's Labor Day weekend and a lot of people are away and our committee's away, so, you know, it doesn't work out. But we have a lot of returning favorites and a couple new ones this year. Our concerts also start at 6:30 as they, as they all do. So on the 6th, we have the Compact Big Band, the 13th of July, the Roy Scott Big Band, the 20th is Westwood Swing Band, the 27th is the Sharon Concert Band, August 3rd starts with the SOS Swing Band, then we have a new group on the 10th called the Shebop Swing Orchestra, and on the 17th, another new group called the Bare Bones Big Band, and then we end the Sunday Concert Series on August 24th with Dan Gabel and his orchestra.
Thank you, David. And Mr. Lee Leach will tell us about the Carol on Concerts, please.
Well, thank you, Bob. Yes, our Carol on series is now in its 40th season. It's a series that I took over from my former Carol on teacher, Sally Slade Warner, who helped establish this 40 years ago with the help of Mr. Bernie Cooper, as many people will remember. It's also, it starts at 6:30 Monday evenings, they go for 60 minutes, so come down or listen from your house, but come down to the Common or in the back parking lot. With the regular Monday night series, there's a lineup of eight Mondays, four of the July dates and four in the August, running from, up until August 25th. We have many of the Carol oners come from out of town, but we also have some of the returning ones that we have used in the past. The out-of-town Carol oners can come from anywhere in the world, really, literally. We have a couple Europeans coming to play for us this year. Trevor Workman on July 28th is from England, and Jasper de Prater from Belgium is playing on August 11th. Some of the other Carol ons are, Carol oners are from University of Chicago, that's July 7th, and these, many of these are younger players, have come along the scene in the last five or 10 years. Some are more experienced. We also have an experienced Carol oner from the University of Florida, Laura Ellis, on the 4th of August. So there's a wide range. One of our Carol oners from Middlebury College teaches in Belgium during the regular school year, that's Sergey Grochchev, and Sergey's probably been here 10 times. I looked at his program, he just submitted it, it's got a lot of accordion music, believe it or not, so that's going to be really interesting on a Carol on. We start this series all out with a special Carol on Open Tower play on July 4th, the afternoon of July 4th, after the children's parade and the reading of the Frederick Douglass Fourth of July speech over at the Old Paris Cemetery. We will have Open Tower and we'll play for approximately two hours, and that will feature Margaret Angelini, who's been playing with me in the most recent past, but also Christina Mayer, who is a Norwood resident. Christina has played in our series before, so I've asked her to participate this year. I will also be there, so you're not going to miss me either on July 4th. So that's the Monday night and July 4th Carol on series.
And I think we'd also would just like to thank the Norwood, the Town of Norwood, the Town Meeting for the appropriation that helps put forward these, this concert series, but if it wasn't for both the contribution by the Town Meeting from Norwood as well as our generous donors, you know, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be able to put forward 25-plus concerts a year as we're doing this year and we have done consistently for the past several. So I know Mr. Easie wanted to just kind of highlight and thank the, particularly our most generous donors to, on the program, please.
Before I do that, let me just, I know you mentioned some of the committee members, but I'd like to just name them all, the ones that aren't here, because everybody works so hard to bring this program, some of them, some of them can't get here this evening. But thank you to Alga Rabdella, Lisa O'Leary, Pat Chick is here, Kevin Broderick, who I saw earlier, Lee Leach was here, Dorothy Prabhu was here, Dave Tuttle seated next to me, big thank you to our chairman, Bob Donnelly, our Town Manager, Tony Mizuko, Michael Rosen, who's here, our Assistant Town Manager, and Gene Vautour. So that's our current committee members, and I just felt that we need to just recognize their names. But, you know, I'm not going to go through the whole list, there's a lot of them, but thank you to all the, every business that has given us a raffle. The raffles, people love the raffles, they're free raffles, we've been doing this for what, almost 40 years, and they come out, I don't know if they come out for the music or they come out for the raffles, but it's always a lot of fun. Anyways, the gold batons and the silver batons, it's a very short list. These people write good-sized checks. When you contribute to a program like this, I believe you need to be recognized, you should be recognized. So in the gold baton, let me start with the silver batons, A-13 Architects, the Bank of Canton, Dedham Savings Savings, the Norwood Women's Community Committee, and One Local Bank, that's our silver batons. And then our gold batons, which are our highest sponsors, big thank you, One Bistro, Diane Shelby and Rojo Company, Inc., and as most of you know, Diane's mother was a founding member of the concerts, Dolores Elias, she's so missed, and she was really up in one of the, you know, major components to get this program off the ground. So thank you, Diane, for continuing this beautiful legacy. Norwood Fight Fight is local 1631 in the Norwood Record, and a special thank you to Dennis Qualley, because from what I understand, the insert is done free of charge to the Norwood Record. So if it wasn't for Dennis getting circulated to the Norwood Record, this, you would not find this in your local newspaper, so big thank you.
Madam Chair, before we open up for commentary, I think Ms. Donahue wanted to also address the board and speak on the committee's behalf as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Hello, everybody. I'm Helen Donahue. My sister, Alga Rabdella, asked me to come and represent her this evening because she is an original member of the Town Concert Committee, and David was there and Paul was there, and before the meeting started, we were trying, trying to remember, can we say the other names, Robert Kinter, Ruth Capla?
Harry Spence.
Harry Spence is what?
Ed Foley.
Ed Foley. In the beginning, the money was raised for the Wednesday by the Town, but for the Sunday concerts and the winter concerts, it was raised by Robert Kinter, they kept going up and putting the arm on everybody to contribute, and it was wonderful. And then everybody was up there building the bandstand, that was a wonderful thing. And two, I can't, and she wanted not to, the day not to go by, about talking about John Carroll and Bernie Cooper, because Bernie Cooper would come from his vacation place on a Sunday night in the traffic, he never misses, and John Carroll, every concert, they would be there. The whole thing was John Carroll's idea, and right?
Yes, yeah.
And then it grew, it grew from the bandstand, and the other thing that she wanted to mention, all of the people who attended over the years, on the Common and at the high school, all the townspeople who cared so much about the music and cared so much to come out, and then when we were doing the Pops concerts ourselves, the Norwood Pops, how many years, 20 years?
Yeah.
We had, what, 100 volunteers, including all the members of Mr. Plasko, who's one of our hottest workers, and we did it all with donations, and we did it all with volunteer work, and it was a pleasure, it was a way of life. So it's hard for her to get here, especially on a day like this, but it's her that's here, not me, and just thank you to everybody.
Madam Chair, thank you, Ms. Donahue. Just one more acknowledgement, all of our concerts, the Sunday and the Wednesday concerts, they start at 6:30, they run to 8:30. We also want to thank Norwood Community Media for always having a staff member on the Common to record the concerts and their related broadcasts on NCM, so shout out to them as well. So with that, I think we'll, we'll stand back and entertain any comment and questions the board may have.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, well, we will start on my left.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for being here as always. It's great to see you. This is such a good thing that our town does and all the work that you do just makes it a special place, so, like every year, thank you so much. And Ms. Donahue, please give our thanks to your sister.
She loves it. She loves the whole thing. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yeah.
Thank you.
Lee, it sounds like you've developed, you used the word scene when you described your Carol on group, which is really, maybe the first time there's ever been mentioned of a Carol on scene, so that's excellent.
Mr. Plasko?
Hi, I'll make it simple. Mentioned earlier tonight was Bernie Cooper, and one of, part of, one of Bernie's favorite sayings was, "Community is what you make it," and your efforts helped make this a community that we all want to call home, that we feel comfortable and enjoy the fact that we're here. And so you and the other organizations that do so many things, like the Fray Committee and so on and so forth, you really make this a wonderful community, and we thank you for all the townspeople.
Before my own comments, do you have any additional?
Just on behalf of the committee, I'd like to thank the Board of Selectmen for their consistent support of the Concert Series over the years. Thank you very much.
And then for my part, obviously, extreme gratitude because I think these are really important feature of the Common during the summer and the nice weather, and then also all the activity that happens in the winter months when people might otherwise be lacking something to go out and do together, so I think it's a really important fixture in the community. Once in a while, I get questions from some of the newer businesses, if they're interested in becoming a sponsor, how would they reach out?
One of the things that we've done, you know, David's pointing out, David, I'll let you take.
We did add the address to send the donation into or drop it off at the Town Hall if they want to in the manager's office. Certainly call the manager's office, we'll gladly talk to anybody who wants to help out, we always need funds.
Excellent. All right, and with that, is there anything else before I can let you all enjoy this very warm evening?
Head for the AC.
Stay cool tonight.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for coming in. Let's see how we're doing on time here. We switch back, so we got five minutes before our next appointment, so why don't we try to get item number one out of the way, which is Warrant Signature Update, Submit Notification of Review and Approved Warrants Signed by the Board's Representative. Do I have a motion?
We'll have to accept and file.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Lane, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, unanimous. And then in five minutes, I think I can at least establish the new business hold patterns that we're ready. So as usual, I'm going to go down the list, anything that you'd like to have deeper discussion on, just call hold and I'll pull it aside. So item 3.1 is a car wash with the Norwood High School golf team for Saturday, July 19th, 8:30 AM until 12:30 PM. Item 3.2, Town Common Dempsey Bandstand Request, this is a request for a small wedding ceremony on July 18th, 4:30 until 6, approximately 10 guests. Item 3.3, this is a request for Town Common use, is for 6:00 AM to 7:15 on Tuesdays and Thursdays, stretching from July 8th until September 30th for a small yoga class of four to six attendees.
Hold.
Yep. 3.4 is appointment of election workers, this was submitted by the Town Clerk, it's listing the election workers in accordance with Chapter 431 of the Acts of 1960, this will be for consideration, I'm going to hold that one. And then item 3.5, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee recommendations about the installation of some no parking signs over on Hill Street and a proposal around that. All right, so we'll be holding items 3.3 and 3.4, but for items 3.1, 3.2, and 3.5.
Yes, approve.
Motion made by Mr. Plasko, seconded by Mr. Donahue, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, unanimous. So we will come back to those two items. Are we able to start if we have our light folks here? I'm of the opinion that I will happily begin, since it's not hearing in, it is a pleasant appointment, so welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you, madam chair. And members of the board, Mr. Rosen, excuse me, for the record, Kevin Shaughnessy, Superintendent of Light Department, we have Darrell Assistant Superintendent Broadband and Darrell Hanson and Jason Haber, who's also an Assistant Superintendent with, on the electric side, and two bottlers here in case we have any financial questions. Quickly, and I know we're, and by the way, it's pretty comfortable here, I thought, maybe it's the quality of electricity.
Or the hot air.
Yeah, well, less, well, now there'll be more hot air. The, things are going well this year, we are holding our electric rates steady, we haven't raised them, obviously you know this, since 2018, and we have no plan to do so. Costs are going up, you know, the debt service that we've taken off the books in the last few years, it's been very helpful, but transmission costs are going up, energy costs are going up, we have to have, you know, certain percentages of renewable energy by 2030 and 2040. So those purchase power agreements are putting a little pressure, but right now, we're okay, and so that's, that's, you know, I think really good news. We had our S and P review, then we got the results a few weeks ago, we're still A-stable, we had gone up last time, it's published, and so I don't know if you've received it, but I can certainly get it to you. You know, our, we've improved over the last few years, our days liquidity has gone from 196 to 232, which is, which is good, our fixed coverage is improved, it's now from 1.4 to 1.2, and most of the metrics, debt to capitalization, has dramatically improved in the past few years, so we're in pretty good shape. They, we would have to do a few more things to get to the next level, you know, these, these ratings are, we're, when we borrow, it's all GO bond, so it's really the town's rating which is better, but our, our rating matters for the bids we get on purchase power to the end of the year, so it's, it's a good thing. And quickly, I know that, if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to take them. Yeah, I was gonna, I just say that.
A bunch of them, I think, yeah.
Yeah, you'll have to go forward. We left, we realized that it would be such a hot night, we skipped a few, few people. But I wanted to let Jason go over the electric project quickly.
Sure. So I'm gonna try my best to fill in for COO, Maric, it's a tough job to do, but figure I'll do my best. We do have a bit of a thing, but I figured it's probably worth touching on, we have seen the last couple of days, it's funny, yesterday we hit a total of 75 megawatts on the system load, which was our all-time peak for 2025, and today we eclipsed it at 80. So typically, when you get multiple hot days in a row, you see the heat increase and the load increase, I should say, every day. I bring that up because I'm proud, because we've only had one transformer overload, it was a residential transformer over off of Oak Road at about 8:00 PM last night, and our systems held up great, that's a testament to the job our guys are doing out in the field, so I'm proud of that. Just to touch on the projects we got going on, landfill projects moving forward, an EPC contractor's been selected, Milton Cat, they plan to start working end of the summer, early fall, that's what we're being told, so hopefully by this time in 2026, we'll have a solar field helping us produce power. 206 Central, we're currently working on getting the, getting the gear, the switch gear out of the back of that building, I'm not sure if you guys know, but that was actually one of our original substations here in town, we have some really old gear inside, so in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be commissioning a brand-new generator and a brand-new pad-mounted transformer service off the main grid, which will then allow us to take the service out of the building, so we won't have any more of the gear inside the building, which is nice. EPR cable project, this is a continuation of a project you guys heard about, the last couple of years, we're taking out our old paper insulated lead conductor cable, the failure rates are high on it, so we selected a contractor, we received a bid, then we selected the contractor, little, under $7 million, it's 11 miles of cable coming out, it's a big project. Once that's done, we won't have any more lead conductor cable in the ground, it'll all be rubber insulated cable, which is a lot more, what's the word I'm looking for? Reliable, there's the word I'm looking for, so that'll be good. Pleasant Street Underground Conduit, we've begun looking at putting a tank on Pleasant from Dean to Morse, we currently don't have, have anything there, right now, our feeders all rise up on our side of Town of Dean, we don't really have any feeders that rise up on that side of Town, so if we could do that, that will allow us to feed down Route 1 down Morse and feed like the Sumner area and just have more options in that part of Town, it's kind of a gap, it'll also give us opportunity to feed the South Norwood Corridor from coming down Morse Short in that direction, and just gives us more opportunities to do things in that area of Town, so it's a really good project.
And Jay, just, I don't mean to interrupt, and use the newer station in the way that it's intended.
Yes.
So that, that will allow us to use Dean Street Station on that side, so it's all, you know, it's going to take some time. It'll be similar to a project we did with Moderna, remember the underground, would you like that?
Absolutely, I appreciate the comments. Transmission line maintenance, as you guys know, November 2024, we had a townwide outage, it was a 20-minute outage, but it happened, so we started to look at surveying our underground transmission line between our two substations to check the integrity of the cable and the splices. A lot of the cable lives underwater all the time, being that the manholes are on Route 1, there's a lot of salts and other contaminants getting in that manhole, so it really hurts the other, of the cable over time, so we have done a survey, we're still in the early process of that, the important part to note on that is since we're a ETF, a pool transmission facility, any work that we do on the transmission line is reimbursable, so it's, it's part of the ISO in New England region, reliability in the region, so if we spend money to maintain it over time, we get that money back at interest.
That's the foresight of Malcolm McDonald and Jim Collins to, to put a loop in at the newer stations, so that we are PTSD, and we can use those revenue requirements, which we do every year, we're somewhere over $5 million now.
Yeah.
Which I think, I don't know if there's any other Muni that's at the level that we are, there's maybe one that's close, but it's, it was forward thinking and it has, and it has helped with our rates, so.
It has. The pole replacement project, that was a, a, every few years, we'll get a company come in to do an ins- The pole replacement project, that was a, a, every few years, we'll get a company come in to do an inspection on all of our poles just as a, as a preventative maintenance type of thing. Osmos was the company that, that we used. They identified three hundred and forty-three poles about a year ago. Replaced a total of ninety so far. It's, it takes about a day a pole, so it's really hard to get three hundred and forty-three done in a year. But I remember the last time they did it, we had a cake when we were all done, we got an ice cream cake for all the guys. So, so I think they're excited about that. But once we get those done, all of our poles will be good shape. We're obviously prioritizing the worst poles and moving in that direction. And the lesson Dan had on here was Moderna Underground's been energized, we're getting paid for it, it's all good. So they're using our two new feeders that we added from our Ellis Substation to the East Campus of Moderna. They have their entire East Campus on these two feeders, it's working great so far, knock on wood. Then we have a bunch of distribution projects in town that you guys probably know all about. FM Global's been energized. Amazon's working on putting in EV chargers, two hundred or so EV chargers, so they're upgrading their service over there. Whole Market Foods recently upgraded their service, I know they were in here getting their things in order. Copley Middle School, the, the new school's been energized. The existing school were actually taken offline Thursday afternoon. So Thursday afternoon is coming offline. Friday, we'll have contractors there cutting out the old cable underground, pulling it out of the underground manhole system on the property. Station forty-seven repairs, we got some duct banks collapsing a little going into our Station forty-seven. So it's just more of a civil project, taking out, just bring the duct banks back up and put them back in place. And the DOT Traffic Settlement Prospect, as you guys probably see as you're driving down Prospect all the time, there's a project going on there, obviously. So hopefully, the next couple of months, that'll be done. We can energize the traffic signals and kind of clean up the traffic at that intersection. That's kind of a mess right now, but that's out of our.
It's not you guys.
Our involvement is only providing power, so that's the.
As far as being down, you're talking about your.
We do have an outage at, we do have an outage at a nursing home in town, the Ellis Nursing Home, Jake. I don't know, I think he's gonna have to sneak out.
Trying to feel the text as I sit here, so you see me all over the place.
If anyone's watching, we're on it.
Twenty minutes ago, we got a call about an outage at the Ellis. Like, guys on the way, so we should be in good shape.
Okay.
Got our best guys on it. And that's really it, that's our, that's our, that's it, so.
Great.
Pass it over to Darrell.
Before we start with Darrell, if you don't mind, just a quick update on the, because Darrell's gonna talk more about the project itself. But as far as financing, as you remember, we were authorized to borrow money a long time ago, during the beginning of the pandemic, I think. And, and things got delayed for a variety of reasons. But it, it worked in our favor. Darrell was able to, to, you know, he makes, you know, a little bit every year, and we were able to put that aside. We had some money to start. It's continued, because we're still operating the system, the HSE system. So we got to a point where, and because of the, the electric side having, you know, we put some money in rate stabilization and so forth, but we were able to then, and you, you voted it, to transfer money from electric to broadband. So we've done that several times, and probably will do it one more time. And we're getting now interest back from broadband to electric, but not the principal. It's like doing our internal ban. When we get, when we know what the actual number is, then we'll, we'll set it, and we'll probably come to you and ask if you're comfortable with, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty, whatever it may be, I'm thinking it's probably gonna be fifteen years. And then we'll, we'll talk about how that will work, and we'll, you know, get the money back from broadband to electric in a, in a manner that, that makes sense. So, and it's all good. We, we think that Darrell has another couple of million, we could ask Sue about that, looking, you know, projecting at the end of this fiscal year. Even though we look at a calendar year, projecting it, I, I think it was gonna be close to, Sue, three million?
Yeah, two point one.
Yeah, and so we'll, we'll look to take some of that, we'd have to ask you later when we do some of the transfers, to, to take that and transfer it to the actual project. Not that it has to be transferred there, but it's just easier for the accounting to keep everything in, in that budget. So Darrell, I know you're anxious to talk about the actual.
Sure.
Project, and how well it's going, and how well it will go.
And all the excitement.
Yeah.
That's going around it. So right now, we got about half the town, you've probably seen our trucks all over town, about half the town has now been cabled. We got the fiber cable in about half the town. Of that, about twenty-two hundred homes passed are ready for installs. So we've already started a soft launch, we're doing some installs. I'm gonna encourage people tonight to go on our website and get on our list, our waiting list. And as we light up each area of town, we'll be able to reach out to these customers, and they'll be the first to get our services. So get on the list. We've got some finalizing to do in our billing system, in our work distribution system. And these should all come together in the next couple of weeks, and then we'll open up our marketing plan. And then anybody in these serviceable areas can call, or we'll be calling them. We've got a great marketing plan set up, so we'll be reaching out to a lot of people, to everybody in town, to hopefully bring them on to North Bay Broadband. All the fiber service that we're offering is gonna be one gig or higher, so no, no more five hundred megabits or, or bigger megabits. So the lowest rate is gonna be fifty-nine ninety-nine, and it's gonna go to sixty-nine ninety-nine. And then our top-tier three gig is gonna be one forty-nine ninety-nine. Now, of course, is with Auto Pay and paperless billing. So we're, we're really excited, people, again, please go to our website. We're gonna start sending out emails, I think, if not the end of this week, early next week, to some of the people in the areas that are ready to go. Hopefully, to some of the town employees. We just, we just wanna start opening up the gate really slowly, and within two or three weeks, the, the gate will open fully, and we'll be able to really beef, beef it up and get a lot of installers done.
Yeah, we, I mean, obviously, we're looking for some patience for people, we'll, you know, it's a new thing for us in the billing system and so forth. So we'll have to work out any issues, and, and hopefully, we'll, you know, one of the reasons you mentioned, town employees would expect that they would be, you know, maybe a little bit more patient. But we, we'll do the best we can. We're really excited, it's, it's gonna be by, I think, by far the best service and, and offering in town. And, you know, we're, we're really ready to go. I know that the, the, they're really pumped up. We had a kind of an internal launch party there a couple of weeks ago, just to kind of get everyone going, and it seemed like it went really well.
Sure.
So it's looking, it's looking like we're gonna really kill it.
And part of the soft launch is to work some of those kinks out, so hopefully, three weeks from now, all the major kinks will be worked out. Of course, we're still working out kinks from our first launch twenty-three years ago.
Yeah.
So there's always gonna be some little kinks, but all the major ones hopefully will be resolved in the next couple of weeks. And that's it.
Okay.
Great. All right, with that, then I will open up two questions from the board. Start with Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you. Just, this is kind of a technical question from my identification. So in the solar field, once it's, in, in the summer, you expect it will probably be installed. How does the power produced for the solar field get back into your distribution system? What's the technical way of accessing?
So we, there's, there's a three-phase line that goes down the right-of-way between Winter and Rugby Road over by Westover Parkway. So back there, there's gonna be an overhead attachment pole that, that's gonna, there's gonna be a pad-mounted transformer on the site of the landfill. We're gonna add one pole, or two poles, actually. And we're, we're gonna rise up and then tie into the overhead lines. The, the solar plant is not too large to tie directly into our system. So if that heater, which is affectionately known as the winter heater, is not carrying enough load to, the solar field's producing more load than the winter heater is actually using. What happens is the solar field activates the substation and goes out to the other feeders. So it's, it's, it just ties directly in, basically.
Yeah, you know, the, the right-of-way between Winter and Willett is what we're talking about. So it'd be, you know, maybe a half dozen holes in from Winter Street. And you can see the, the edge of the, of just the landfill, of the part where they put the, kind of where the grass starts.
Yeah. And, and how long a project will, will entail?
I'm gonna guess, honestly, I'd say probably four, four months from kickoff. Every time we talk to them, unfortunately, they seem to have a new hurdle that they've, they've hit on procurement of materials. The latest one is the racking for the panels themselves. They're telling us that the vendor is, is, is giving preferential treatment to some of their larger customers. So they're our partner, though, so we're trying to make sure this project gets done. Mike and I were actually on a call earlier today, a few hours ago, kind of saying the importance of the project and getting it done. So our intention is, they're, they were telling us, commercial operating date, the last we heard, commercial operating date was December thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. I'd be more comfortable telling you probably March of twenty twenty-six, based on the fact that it's already the end of June, and I haven't seen any materials yet, but that's what I got.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the pricing isn't actually, you know, that we're, that worried about it, and it's, it's okay. That's what you get on these local projects. I mean, we, we definitely have better deals. But it's, it's something we wanna see, and it's, I think it's something we've been waiting a long time for. We wanna show people that we're, we're doing the right thing, and we're gonna meet our objectives in twenty thirty, which we kind of have already met.
Yeah, we're already met them.
And actually, we're very close to twenty forty as well.
Assuming it's a successful project, it, it, it meets the goals and objectives that's defined, are there other potential areas for expansion of similar solar power in Norwood?
I, I don't know about Norwood, sometimes people, you know, approach us for rooftops and things like that. We, we're, you know, we, through Energy New England, we do look at any project that they come forward with, and most of them aren't in the state. They're bigger projects, Desry, the, where's that, Jake?
Connecticut.
Connecticut. And so those type of projects, as a group, we really look at. But you're right, these local resources are gonna become very valuable. Transmission costs are going up, and it makes sense, not, maybe not Norwood, if, if we don't have the room, but any of the other munis that have that, we certainly wanna be a part of it. And not just the, like, a project, like we're talking about, but it could be battery storage, anything like that. We actually are part of, Energy New England has a transmission part, E N E T, which I'd love to have them come speak to at some point, if, if you're willing. I'm actually chair of that group, and these are the type of things that we, we talk about. We're looking at anything that we can do within our, our territories. Even if we were to partner with IOU, heaven forbid, but, you know, these are the things that make sense. If transmission costs are gonna be twenty percent, and they keep going up, and if we can eliminate parts of that, it's, it's all good. So to answer your question, we would certainly entertain any project in town. We, like with this project, we went out and we got bids. You know, what, what happens is you've probably seen a lot of this on social media, well, the town of Norwood doesn't really, they're not really progressive with solar. You know, it really comes down to rates. We, we set our rates really low, you know, we're half what the surrounding towns are. If we were to, to offer something like the ISOs, I, I mean, the IOUs have to do it, right? That, that's, they're regulated to do that. We aren't. If we were to do that, then we'd have to raise everyone else's rates to, to accommodate that. And we do, I think we, we had approached, we're probably gonna come back in the near future with some rates, like a solar, a different solar rate. We had, you know, a demand rate for commercials, we have an EV rate, things like that, that may produce more of what you're talking about.
Thank you.
All right.
Mr. Plasko?
No, I thank you for the information. I might have had a couple more follow-ups about costs and so forth, but I don't wanna get into that tonight, so I think we're all set.
All right.
Thank you very much. Just thank you for being here, it's always great when you can give us this information, give it to the public. And you're doing just a great job, so also thank you to Kathy and to Dan and Rich, but, yeah, we, and Sue, of course, but. Yeah, it's great, and I think, you know, just the fact that we haven't raised rates in seven years is pretty incredible, so. It's a testament to the work that you all do, and, yeah, keep it going.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then for my part, I have a question for each side, which I'll start with the cable side. What do we think our approach is going to be to make sure that customers are aware of and understand why they would want the fiber-to-the-premises service? Like, what's our strategy for reaching those folks?
Speed, reliability. We've got a great marketing plan, that is gonna cover all the bases, you're gonna start seeing it coming out pretty soon. But the, we've always been the reliable provider in town, we're gonna, we're gonna bank on that going forward. And nobody's gonna be faster than us, at least for a while. So the one, two, and three gigs, nobody's really offering, honestly, right now, Comcast says they are, but they're, they're really not. Certainly not symmetrical speeds like we're offering, so it's gonna be a better product and far more reliable.
Excellent.
And I did mention Wi-Fi. With each new install, they're gonna get the latest Wi-Fi, seven routers included in their price, the first one. If they need additional ones, they'll have for mesh Wi-Fi, be an added cost, but the first one's gonna be included.
Excellent. And then on the electric side, a little earlier you mentioned the sort of, the runoff on the salt contamination and such being a little hard on the cables and things. Would there be any merit to us doing some lobbying about creating a low-salt area near there?
I don't know enough about how much salt they apply on Route One to be able to educationally give you an answer to that, to be honest with you. I think it's more the water, the water table's so high there that the, the splices, the way they're manufactured at the time, it was like a heat shrink rubber that you put over exposed copper and tape. Now they make pre-molded joints that are really waterproof. That's what we used in our repair, so we got one installed, but we still need to.
Huge money, by the way.
Yeah.
The splices are big enough to handle.
Yeah, we're talking, I mean, each, we got, we actually talked to the vendor, and budgetary pricing was about two hundred and seventy thousand a manhole, and we got twenty manholes, you could, you guys can do the math on that. It adds up pretty quick, so. The, the honest answer is no, the damage is probably already done. It's twenty-three-year-old install, the splices had a twenty-year warranty, cable's got a forty-year warranty. Unfortunately, these things have a life to them, and the older I get, the faster time seems to go by. So, so unfortunately, it is what it is. At some point, probably, I'll probably be sitting here at some point in my career asking to replace all the cable, so it just happens.
And then my last item for you is not a thing for you to answer tonight, or even in the near term, it's more of just planting a seed for future rumination. One of the things I was looking at is in a lot of regions, you know, you often take advantage in terms of energy of what do you have too much of, and how can you turn that into something that's to your advantage, right? You know, up in places that have geothermal, it's like, well, like, that's all they had to work with, they had no trees, they couldn't burn trees, so they turned to that. And so in our case, what do we have too much of right now? Heat and water. And so if we can think of opportunities to use those two things to our advantage in terms of energy production, please do feel free to bring ideas forward to us.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
That's all I have for the night.
Yeah, thank you. Much appreciated.
Thank you for joining me.
I gotta run.
Bye, Sue.
Thanks for coming in, Sue.
Sue, can you just move yourself further?
There's no hiding from the cameras, I always warn everyone, you can't escape. Thank you. All right, and so we are right at time for our next appointment, if Mr. Cheever is out there. Yep, he is. We'll go ahead and wave him in. Welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a seat. Thanks for coming in to see us on this hot evening.
Yes. Appreciate the invitation, it'd be casual, as I was at the farmer's market today earlier, that's why I also have some produce from there, I didn't want to get cooked in the car. So, did you bring it with you? I did. I'm happy to, to show off some of the, we have some, some rainbow chard, there's some root barb in here. And some strawberries, I would say, strawberries would be.
Very good. And then just for the sake of the public record, if you can reintroduce yourself for those folks that might be watching at home that might not already be familiar with you.
I am Clayton Cheever, the library director of the Memorial Memorial Library. I am Clayton Cheever, the library director of the Memorial Memorial Library, the library here in Denver.
We can go ahead and get started. Take it away.
All right. Thank you for having me today. I have a few goodies that I'm just pulling out, not my groceries that I was just talking about. We have a lot going on at the library. Here, I'll pass these around. I've got one of these. This is where we have summer reading began last Friday, our busiest day of the year so far up to date. With the kickoff of summer, you started off in the twentieth. This is your twenty twenty-five, that one for you too. The twenty twenty-five adult summer reading passport, which you, every time you complete one of the things in here, you can come and get a stamp. You can also take a picture of it and email it to us if that's easier for you. And it's, we have summer reading for all ages. We've got three different age programs for everybody, for the very littlest kids. You can do a book bingo. It's a different reading challenge to keep kids and students reading. But adults like it too, so I hope you enjoy it. I'll pass these around too. They're pretty self-explanatory. There's one of each of the flyers and they're just talking about some of the stuff that's coming up here in the library. Actually, I have a couple notes. There's a lot happening. We are super busy. Experiencing, did I bring those notes? I think I did. I'll just do it off the top of my head. It's all good. We've been super busy in the library. We keep seeing record numbers, looking at, you know, pre-pandemic kind of levels of visitation. Looking at our visitation, the number of people that have been coming through the library this month, which is always interesting to bring you the most recent information. The three busiest days this month were two Sundays and then that Friday, the twentieth, right after Juneteenth, the beginning of summer vacation for, for everybody in school here in Norwood. We have circulated over, checked out over eight thousand items so far. I suspect by the end of the month, we'll exceed ten thousand. Pretty typical. Well, it, we're, it keeps growing. We've been, I think March was our busiest month, which is pretty typically our busiest month of the year. But we're seeing every month is more than this month, the same month last year. So it's exciting to see. We've been doing a lot of fun projects with other departments. I don't know if the light department was just talking about the EV grant that we, I sat with. Oh, one of the gentlemen was here and with Mark Ryan and Stephen Sobel and a representative from the, the third-party vendor who's helping facilitate, I think, the development of that grant. We're looking at getting a charging station, which I don't know if you had a chance to talk about that before I came in tonight.
I did not, actually.
So I'll take an opportunity now. We are looking for public feedback on different EV charging stations throughout town. We're looking at one on Beacon Street, right alongside the library. It's a grant that will give the town five hundred thousand dollars for multiple charging stations around town. And we were originally thinking of putting one that would be kind of adjacent, right to the parking lot, but the grant stipulates it has to be on street parking. So we're looking at that strip that's just along beside the side of the library. There's a few other locations in town. We had a preliminary meeting in the Simoni Room and we actually, we were going to go and take a tour of town and instead just took a Google Street View and Google Maps and threw it up on and projected it. And then Stephen and the gentleman, whose name I'm forgetting, or a friend, the consultant, the firm that's helping us, I saw them later going around town doing it. So the rest of us were able to look and just do that virtual tour, the flyby tour there and scout several locations around town. And now we're looking just for some feedback from, you know, neighbors, people who could be impacted by these, these parking changes around town. So there is a QR code. I'm happy, I've sent it to you before. I didn't bring a copy of the QR code here, but we have it on display at the library. I've sent it to all the immediate neighbors that I know who've just, you know, going at the library. And certainly encouraging everybody who hasn't. We'd like to weigh in on whether we want to see more or fewer charges, whatever their opinion is about charging stations. I think it'd be very positive to have a charging station adjacent to the library so people could. Yeah, it's going to be a level-two charger. They're not the fastest. But you can come and enjoy the cool air conditioning in the library all the time that we're open, which is seven days a week. And we're really grateful for the ability to be open seven days a week. The other exciting, most exciting thing that I'm hoping will develop right now and may or may not develop in the fall, but something is we were experiencing kind of the impact of this extreme heat these last few days on some of the most vulnerable members of our community, really drives home the need to look out for some of those members. We, we see some folks that are pretty marginalized and in some tough ways, who will spend significant hours in the library. And we worry about them and sometimes they behave in ways that we can't abide and we have to ask them to leave and they come, you know, figure out how to manage things so they can come back and share it with everybody and we do that as necessary. But for the folks who are really in a tough spot, I don't know. We just, I was, I've been talking to Stacy Lane in the Health Department about what we can do to provide for the, the social needs of our community. I was approached by somebody at the Massport Library Commissioners who introduced me to somebody who runs the macro social work program at the Boston University School of Social Work, the Sargent School of Social Work. And she's responsible for placing interns in communities, you know, for their students to, to be, to add an internship opportunity in various places around the greater Boston and Massachusetts area. They even have some, some students who do remote learning, so they're even all around North America or even further potentially. I don't really know on the full extent. Some of the requirements, Stacy and I have met and talked about it. We've sat and talked with this professor from BU. One of the requirements is you have to have a degreed social worker who has experience supervising folks to provide that supervision. We don't have anybody of that nature currently working in town. By being creative, Stacy suggested we talk to her colleague, Lenny, at, who's the head of the Health Department in Wellesley. I know Jamie, the head of the library in Wellesley, and so I reached out to Jamie. And Stacy reached out to Lenny. They have a social worker on staff in Wellesley. And we've had a very productive conference, you know, call of all of us and this person from BU and expect to be seeing resumes soon for potential interns so that we can get some help. So just some additional free staffing, basically. I mean, nothing is free. There is a supervisory requirement. It will cost some time, I'm sure, especially at the beginning of their experience, but there will not be monetary expense. And I think that will both help us do some asset mapping, some macro-level social work, provide some resources that we currently don't have available here in Norwood in addition to contributing to the field and helping make sure we're really at that forefront of, of community delivering of service and coordination of services across departments. Because we know that coordination of services is how we're going to find our way forward. Those are the main things. I could talk about the flyers I handed around. If you had any questions about them, I could do a whole, you know, PR plug for everything there. But I know it's hot. You've got a long night. So I didn't want to take up your time. But I'm happy to answer any questions or concerns that you have. I certainly can talk about what's been happening with IMLS, the Institute for Museum and Library Services, which has been cut federally and how that's impacted. There were three point six million dollars that were supposed to be coming to Massachusetts that everybody is planning not to see and the implications of that and what's, what's going to happen. And I can talk about it if you're interested. We could talk about what, how the Massport Library Commissioners has, you know, been prioritizing their budget going forward. There's a lot of pressures in the library world right now and anybody who's interested in going out and talking about the importance of libraries in our community and what they're doing for folks. We could sit here all night long and talk about that if you'd like. What would you like to hear?
Why don't I turn it to questions from the board? I'll start on my left.
Thank you. Thank you for being here, Clayton. We appreciate it. You sort of just touched on it. Is there anything that we can do as a board or in the community to advocate for, you know, at least level funding for the services that, you know, you're used to providing? You don't have to answer that. It's just, you know, if there's anything that we can do, please let us know how we can be helpful because, you know, it's, I think it's one of the most important things that we do as a community is provide all these wonderful resources at the library. My children were there already starting their summer reading. But so, you know, please feel, feel like you, you can have a dialogue with us on that.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I mean, one of the things that's tricky in this time to figure out how we can be effective is knowing how they're going to roll out. Some of the conversations we're having at some of the, the larger meetings across the state is trying to figure out, you know, where are these cuts, you know, how are we going to affect them? Where are they, where are they going to be felt? People will feel the cuts that are coming. Do we, you know, do we appreciate those cuts in ways where they cut people that are doing administrative work across the state that is important in providing support but won't be affected as much? Or do we preserve those jobs and, and the individual lives are affected by that? But then there's, and this is actually what's been done, is, is some jobs have been saved by some databases across the state are being cut, which is, is going to impact. Transparent languages was something we had available across the state. We're not going to have after July first available. There's some Boston Globe resources that I think BPL may pick up some and everybody can appreciate that. And everybody across Massachusetts can get a library card from the Library for the Commonwealth, which is Boston Public Library. But it's going to be a couple more hoops that people have to jump through. There are some other databases that we're not getting enough use. We're looking at picking up a couple of things and realizing, okay, the state can carry some, can we carry some? But eBooks is in a situation where it is a complicated situation where we're looking at a, a half, a half of the funding that was coming from the state for the eBook collection across the state is being cut. We're going from a million dollars, they contributed to eBook spending for a collection to support the entire state. Only five hundred thousand dollars starting next fiscal year. That's going to mean, it's going to take longer to get books on Libby, is really what that's going to be. There's support in the platform fees, so like those networks that were fully dependent upon the state to have that will still have access, but everybody's going to have to wait longer. That's going to be painful. Is this really the, the world that we want to, like, can we do better? How do we do better by folks? One of the ways we can do better is to have eBook, is to improve the whole eBook situation. And I could talk about that for a while. Went to a two-day conference in Connecticut. We were looking at what do we do on a national campaign to do something about the eBook landscape? And there's eBook bills. There was a bill that was passed in Connecticut. There's a bill on the floor in New Jersey. There's progress towards getting a bill here in Massachusetts to look at eBook. The terms that, that if you receive state funding, you are limited, what, what kind of terms you, you can accept? That's, we, we found that we can't, you can't impose terms that they have to sell by. It's been determined by the court to be an infringement of their First Amendment rights. But we can use collective buying power to say, you know, if you're going to use public funds, you have to make sure that with any, as with other purchasing agreements, that it abides by these terms. So support for the eBook bills as they go through the State House. If you know anybody in Massachusetts State House to support those bills, that's really helpful. It's possible. The governor has said that she will veto any bill that doesn't levelly fund libraries, which is really nice. And I'd like to see a commitment across the board that we at least level fund. We know that level funding doesn't mean level service in the future because as contracts keep going up, if we level fund, there will be services that have to be cut. That's, you just, so that's, I don't know, how do we figure out what's going to be back in that process? So I appreciate the offer of support. It's not a simple answer, obviously. And it's not a simple ask. When there is an ask, I'll let you know.
Great. Thank you very much.
Well, similarly, appreciate the value of the library, its part of the community and services it offers and if there's things we can do to help participate. You talked about the budget a little bit of financing and if it's level funded. We're going to be looking at some tough times, Mr. Donnelly and others are going to be paying a lot of attention to that for the next few months and trying to plan for the next couple of years. So it might get tight just locally, never mind with the governor of the state.
I do understand.
And have to prepare for that. But other than the general support, the one thing that we maybe are most responsible for dealing with the library, the building.
Yes.
How, how's things going? What's going on?
So I'm glad you asked because at nine fifteen tomorrow morning, Mike and I will be having a conversation with Connor Dello and Marika. I forget, Marika's the last, Ellen's? Budins and Llos of the firm. Marika's not a named partner in the firm, so it's not her last name. We'll be meeting with, with two members of the, the architecture firm that's been doing the building study right now so they can present their, their, their draft or their final report. There's some room to actually finalize of the reports. I'm not calling it a final report yet until I've seen it and had an opportunity to give some feedback on it. But I've seen a preview of it. They were getting some final numbers just at the end of, the week before last and then compiling the piece to actually look at the dollar figures to do. They have, my understanding of what we're going to see is there's going to be four, three or four tiers of repairs that need to be made to the building just to take care of the existing building and make so that the water is no longer penetrating and we have extreme weather, water events, rain and snow and ice. We had a ceiling tile just this afternoon collapse because with the extreme humidity, as we're a cooling center, we're keeping it cool in the library. We're grateful for that and we can do it. But the humidity is so great and we have unlined pipes that there's just sweating on those pipes that come down and then it's, it's not a good situation. So there's a lot of things to do to mitigate the existing problems. One of the challenges that they already presented is that when you do repairs to a building that exceed thirty percent of the assessed value of that building, it triggers a whole bunch of accessibility and code upgrades that are required. And so it goes into a question of what, they, they are going with the, the current assessed value of the building. We as a town assess the building and I don't know how you go about assessing. I'm not an assessor. I don't know how you go about assessing a, you know, historic building like a library that there's no market for. There's not a, you can't go out there in Massachusetts and buy anything like what we have here in Norwood. So how do you assign a value to it? I would argue that we could look at a replacement cost value and what it would cost to replace it. Maybe that would be a reason to, to reconsider how the currently assessed value is. But what they're going is with the currently assessed value, looking at what thirty percent of that would be and saying we should budget right now because they think that even just the first tier of repairs to the building are going to exceed that thirty percent, which would trigger all these upgrades. So the recommendation, what I expect to see and learn more about tomorrow morning is to see those costs, to see them broken down and to see a plan for how we can go forward to address them. I suspect that some of the second and definitely third, and if there's a fourth tier, some of the additional repairs that they're going to recommend that we make will trigger those in, in code.
Architectural access board.
Exactly. The compliance, all the, and one of the big ones that I, they already briefed me about is the number of toilets that the plumbing code changed in twenty twenty-three, they said. And we had, don't have nearly enough toilets just to fit. And I don't know, we're going to fit extra toilets in the building. So there's a lot of puzzles to figure out as we go forward. Those code requirements and what we're going to need to do to come compliance and there could be some variance opportunities for some of that. But it's going to trigger really the need to consider what is the best library that Norwood needs to have for what Norwood has. And that, I think, is looking at a, a renovation project in the next five to 10 years. That's, and then we've put that into the capital budget plan. And starting with, we have, right now we're earmarked one point four million dollars to do that. That's thirty percent of the current assessed value because that's the beginning of the repairs. But we also earmarked, I know we're not here to talk deep into the numbers, but we earmarked ten million dollars five years out so that we have something to, to tell us, hey, when we dive into this renovation project, which is going to be necessary for the code compliance, for all the repairs that are just necessary with this building, we owe it to the community to make sure we're building the library that, that makes sure that, that Norwood needs, that can provide the services that Norwood has, has come to expect and demand.
Well, we don't want to get cheap. We want to do what's right, what's right for the community. But sometimes code compliance is not reasonable. And a lot of times there are ways to seek waivers. So I hope we keep that in the, in our hands of, I would have tried to deal with this and not just accept, oh, the college says we've got to have fifty if we can get a waiver and only have them five.
I'm certainly as long, yeah, I, I think we're of like mind on that front. I totally understand what you're saying and, and believe that, in that as well.
Just because we want to get what we need, but we want to control the cost too, not get crazy. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the concern.
Oh, I don't have any questions for Clayton, but I did want to thank you for the invitation we extended to the summer kickoff of the Poria Village.
Oh, I'm glad you brought that up.
Center on, on, on Friday afternoon. So I thank you for that and I'll be glad to see you then.
Great. Thank you.
And then I likewise, I'm going to try to, to make it more a little double booked that day. But I'm looking forward to it all the same. It's really awesome. And do you mind if we keep these?
By all means. And we have plenty more. So if you, anything that you want more, let me know. I can send you a digital copy or whatever format you'd like.
I will make sure this goes to good use. And I'm, I'm really appreciative of the programming. I feel like the library's been doing a good job of having a variety, like a broad variety of topics of age being targeted. So there's, there's really a nice collection of activities. And so I'm very appreciative of that portfolio of, of items for the community.
And you can bring in the kids programs today either.
Yeah.
That's a whole other presentation.
And then a question on the cooling center aspects of the library because I do think that that's also a highly valuable service. Have you found here in the last few days is the usage from, from a cooling perspective, does it feel like it's similar to past heat waves we've dealt with? Or is it higher, lower than what we usually see?
Anecdotally, it seems higher. We've seen more, I've heard more people just this afternoon asking, you know, oh, how late are you open? What, you're open till nine? Oh, thank you. This is great. I'd like to go somewhere, but I'll be back. Being at the farmer's market today, I had multiple people say, you know, just how grateful they were to know, even if they've got, you know, I talked to one woman who was like, oh, I have a pool. I got this. I was like, I'm coming to your house for ice cream, you know, for, for some iced tea and, and a nice place to chill out. But come over when you need something to read. But it definitely seems, we've seen more people, especially, you know, we get somewhat of a lull at lunchtime because everyone's eating lunch. I wouldn't be surprised if, you know, from eight to nine, it starts to get a little quieter, but that's, that's our regular flow. It definitely seems like we're seeing more now. I know that in times past when we've stayed open and extended our hours to be a cooling center, sometimes we've run it with a skeleton. center, sometimes we've run it with a skeleton staff and whoever we could get to volunteer. And we've seen a handful of folks come through. But I also know from talking to Mike and Tony and other folks around town, just knowing that there is a place where they can get relief is a huge burden, knowing that, you know, if they talk to their neighbors, you know, nobody is fully out alone and just at risk.
Good.
Knowing that we provide that, both is something that we are really grateful to be able to do, because it's a, just to know that we can give in that way. But I know it's also really meaningful for folks who have relatives in Norwood who maybe live elsewhere, to know that, hey, mom, you know, if her AC kicks, she can come over to the library and she's going to be okay.
Excellent. All right. That was all the questions I had for you. And so with that, I think we can let you take your vegetables back and make sure that they don't wilt.
Go get that jar used.
Yeah, exactly. Thanks for coming in to see us tonight.
Thank you.
You too. All right. So, we, I'm going to skip down to memoranda, just to get memoranda out of the way, and then we'll come back to the items that we had on hold.
File 4-1 and 4-2.
All right. Motion to file made by Mr. Plasko and seconded by Mr. Lane. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right. So, let's swing back around to item 3.3. This is the yoga class. I believe that hold was by Mr. Plasko, if I heard right.
I believe it's like Mr. Donnelly had comments on that.
Yeah, I had, well, I appreciate the offer from the petitioner to submit a donation to the Food Pantry Organization for having yoga classes on the common. I was concerned that regardless of that very nice offer, we would still be utilizing the common for an organization that is charging a fee for those courses. And I just wanted to bring that to light. I'm sure others have noted that too. But I would just raise that concern in, as we deliberate on this particular request.
I was trying to recall, because I believe we've had a similar request in the past, and my recollection was that that concern had been raised then as well. And I was trying to remember what the outcome was, but I wasn't able to track down which meeting it had occurred in, if anybody remembers.
We've lost them, we've denied. I don't know if there's one or two that might have got by us.
By Mike?
Yes.
I, in principle, am opposed to this. I don't think it falls in line with our use for the common regulations. It's a small group. They're suggesting it's at an early time that probably isn't that inconvenient for a lot of the public, but it's a matter of principle, because we allow this, and others come forward, and they be, and now we start having private groups, business groups, if you will, using the public common and taking up space and interfering with the use from the general public. And I just think, you know, a lot of these things, even if we thought we'd like to help support them, there's no reason, has to all be in the common. This would be a perfect little thing based on the way it's described, this may be over on Bond Street Playground area. And we have to get away, in my opinion, from everything being on the common, all these requests. Maybe people don't know to request something themselves, but I might entertain another area, but not the common reasons Mr. Donnelly mentioned and others that I just don't think it's appropriate.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Plasko. I had the same thought.
And a question I have is kind of on the line of what you were mentioning just now is, it, how would we feel if they had asked at a different location that wasn't the common? Would we still be?
Well, I think, I think we were looking for regulations from the manager's office for other parks and so forth, and I don't think we got any further than a re-update on the common regulations, but not necessarily what affects the other parks. And I don't know personally that the same regulations would apply, so I think we have to give that a little more thought. Personally, I'd be open to maybe other locations, but I think we collectively have to have a plan around that.
So, on that note, my thought was, do we want to move in the direction of saying, you know, just denial, or do we want to move in the direction of saying, hey, coordinate with the manager's office and propose a different location, and we might consider that?
My sense is that we probably would want to just do the due diligence to Mr. Plasko's points in terms of what our regulations do require, and then have the applicant, and if it should be that there's more clarity around the possibility of an alternate site besides the common, then we could advise the applicant to return with another application, with a different location. But in the interim, I think perhaps the wisest thing might be to deny this and then communicate that they may come back at a certain point once we have clarity.
Maybe they'll have an alternative request.
Right. All right. Well, then with that, do I have a formal motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion too, is no idea.
Motion made by Mr. Lane.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Donnelly. Anything further? All in favor of the denial, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Right, unanimous of denial. All right. And then we can move down to item 3.4. This is, I just wanted to make sure if anybody had any questions or concerns about the list. I thought it looked fine, but it was one of those things I didn't want to sort of just fly, fly along without a moment. But this is just the list of election workers, having an update on that.
Anyone who's willing to do it, God bless.
I know, it's a lot of great names on the list, so we have a very active community, so I'm very pleased. So, with that, then I will entertain a motion for that item.
I'll move for approval of the list provided by the town clerk.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Donnelly to approve, seconded by Mr. Lane. Any further discussions? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Unanimous. All right. Memoranda is already out of the way, so that brings us to the manager's update tonight. We have Mr. Rosen joining us.
Thank you.
Mr. Plasko.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, public at home. Just in light of the fact that this is our last meeting before July 4th, I just wanted to remind everybody that our July 4th festivities, which we heard about in our last meeting, are at full swing. We are very close to having all the finishing touches in place. Just to advertise that if folks are interested in running the 5K road race at 5:00 PM, there is still time to register ahead of time. We have about 51 registered participants at the moment. But if you'd like, the cutoff for registering ahead of time is July 2nd at noon. You will be able to register on the day of, July 4th as well, beginning at 3:30 on the common. There's going to be a booth set up there for same-day registration. It's $25 either way, ahead of time or day of. But, and when Mr. Leach was here earlier, he mentioned the Carillon component of the overall July 4th festivities. Obviously, the, it's a full day's worth of things, starting at 1:00, and it goes all the way to about 7:30, 8:00 at night. So, it's a nice, long day of fun, and we're excited to put on another great year of that. So, that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Excellent. All right, then, we will start right on to your left there with Mr. Donnelly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of committee updates. So, me and Mr. Tiber was talking about the capital improvements under review at the library. So, we are kicking off our review of the FY '26 Capital Improvement Plan on July the 14th. Mr. Rosen has informed me that the department heads have met and have had their first cut at what they are proposing and prioritizing for their capital outlay projects for consideration at our Fall Town meeting. And the committee will then have an opportunity, the first opportunity on July the 14th, to hear those requests and then have subsequent meetings throughout the summer and the fall prior to town meeting. And with that information being given to us on the 14th, I, as your representative of the Capital Outlay, I'll make sure that we, as a committee, are seeing what the projects are under consideration for draft for the, from the Capital Outlay Committee. Also, just last evening, just another committee update. So, the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee met yesterday, had a marathon meeting, three-hour meeting last night. Our engagement process has ended, and we're now in the phase where we're reviewing the data, getting the summary of the data, and starting to look at some specifics regarding how do we take that information now and develop the plan vision, as well as goals and objectives for the plan. And that will be a several-month process. So, as your representative, I will continue to update you on that particular process, and particularly as to advise you as to appropriate opportunity, perhaps have the members of the steering group or the chair of the steering group and our community planning director in for another update, perhaps later this summer. And that's all I had. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Plasko.
I think only one is timely enough to bring up tonight, and that is, I don't know what it was, six months ago, whatever, we had a review and a recommendation on water and sewer increases, and we set that for six months with a directive that they come back with the recommendation for the following six months, and haven't seen anybody. And I don't want the board being sidestepped. I don't want, even if the recommendation is to keep the rate the same, we should know that and be aware of that and be approving that. So, I want to see that come back to us as soon as possible. Please. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Lane?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All set? All right. And then for me, two little things.